Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, November 2nd, 2009. This evening, City Council is meeting in regular session. We do have a call with all members of council present. Next item on our agenda is the disposition of minutes. We have before us the minutes from the special session of council held October 12th and the regular session of council held October 19th. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are accepted. Communications? I'm really not in receipt of any communications I need to share. Are there others? Member Butler?
Thank you, sir. I just want to thank members, well, Member Nysley and then the mayor and the city service safety director for attending the AMAC meeting earlier in the week, or last week rather. That was informative and I think it was a good use of time. Want to say thank you.
Other comments? Communications? Reports and communications from other elected officials? Mayor Wile?
Oh, well, I, also Rich Kent Kelly was there too.
That's right, thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody who worked for Halloween. It was a lot of work. We had, we had safety teams out there. Chris Nysley was part of it as well. It seemed to go okay. We don't have the final figures so far for how much it cost. It didn't look like it was going to be coming through with all the rain there earlier in the day. We had arrests, of course, I think you probably, I don't know if you got the press release along the way, about 51 persons arrested by the city police. Actually, there were higher numbers from the Public Safety Enforcement Division, that's liquor enforcement. They actually got 51 on Friday, 61 on Saturday. I'm also aware of the fact that seems to be, was extra busy for mostly intoxication purposes, taking people to the hospital for that. Other than that, it seemed to go pretty well. There were some small fires, a small fire started on the roof of Court Street, basically because somebody was doing pyrotechnics and whatever they were using as a container court fire. That was put out easily, but you could see the damage, the danger of that uptown, if it took off. I believe there was a couch fire in Palmer later in that evening, too. So, all in all, it was a lot of work. I was out there until 3:00, but I went home early compared to the street crews and everybody else who had to work, you know, for another two hours at least. Other items than that? I don't really have much. I think I gave you some paperwork on the Trex thing. The question last time was asked whether that D5 could be transferred and turned into a bar. From what I understand, Reed, it can be. If you remember, we have been able to, it wouldn't really be seen as a change of use to my knowledge. You could have a restaurant and all of a sudden, you know, it goes away and then you still have the same, you know, there wouldn't be a title difference, there wouldn't be a change of ownership, but it could just be a change of use in that sense.
I've had a couple of council members ask that to be discussed at a committee meeting, a committee of the whole, probably next week.
Okay, realize the clock is ticking to ask for a here. That's why I mentioned, I think it's the 17th or 21st. I don't think I have that information in front of me, but just so you-
I think that still allows us another regular meeting of council that we could-
Decide.
-ask for one, so.
I just want to let you know. And that's all I really have.
Yes.
Do we have, Mayor, do we have any resources that we could call upon for next week to explain this Trex issue to us? It's a new process that we learned about a couple of months?
I don't know who knows about it. What I've read is off the, you know, the liquor control website, really, and that's about the extent of it. I don't know of how many people, I don't even know how often it's being used. It's fairly new, but not that new. I think, I think sometime last year when Salons was moving from point A to point B, they had mentioned it. And that was, that's been almost a full year. So, it's been in the works for about a year, but I don't know much more about the ins and outs of it.
We can ask the applicant also to appear?
Yes, you can, yeah. That might be the way to go, because they actually gave me most of the information when they applied.
And I believe the police chief did send attachments to all members of council, or was I the only one?
No, I think everybody got that.
Okay, so I think there's a lot of information there also. Member Bain?
But the most explicit piece of information I'd like to know is, would they have to go through the Trex process to transfer, should they disappear? Because that's what was said to me today on a phone call by a citizen.
Tell you truth, I would suspect not. And the reason why I say that is, think about, we have over quota right now of, of D licenses. And we move them back and forth, and there's requests for hearing each time, but where their trip, I don't know. I don't think, I don't think it would. I think that's a process to get it into this, into the city limits, but after that, I do not know.
Okay.
We could ask that. I could, I'll shoot an email to Liquor Control and see what happens. How's that sound?
That sounds great. I'd like to know for sure. That's the main question.
City Auditor Kathy Heck?
My turn.
City Treasurer Mary Ann McClure?
I've passed out to all of you the third quarter interest income report. Thanks us to your date, $274,044.57. And the projections that I've done for fourth quarter, I think will get us to just about or just under the projection for the year. And the other report attached to that, this report is my July, August, and September bank reconciliation for your reference.
Okay. Any questions for the treasurer? City Law Director Patrick Lang?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a report tonight, but I would just like to take this opportunity to extend thanks both from myself and from my office to the Athens Police Department, Fire Department, Streets Department, and really everyone whose hard work this weekend led to what was a relatively safe and orderly event.
Thank you. Any other comments? Onto ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 12709 is an ordinance amending the 2009 appropriation ordinance. Ordinance 13209 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an LPA federal project agreement with the state of Ohio through the Director of Transportation for Rehabilitation of the Richland Avenue 682 intersection and Richland Avenue Bridge Project Number 230. Project, or project. Ordinance Number 13309 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to suspend temporarily the fee for parking of metered spaces in the municipal parking garage and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 13409 is an ordinance authorizing preliminary engineering of the Richland South project. Ordinance 13509 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into contract for design services to promote a clean energy program and declaring an emergency. Member Gosny?
Mr. President, I would like to move that we consider ordinance 13509 under suspension.
Second.
Reason for suspension?
This ordinance would allocate funding for us to do some program design work on a municipal renewable energy program. And there's, this preparation work is in anticipation of a grant submission that's due December 14th.
Is there further discussion on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending council rules on ordinance 13509? Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Thank you. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 13509.
Second.
This ordinance would allocate $14,000 from the Athens Enhancement Fund to bring in some outside expertise for program design work, preliminary program design work for a city energy program. It would make solar energy more accessible to city residents and hopefully businesses as well. And there would also be an energy efficiency component to that program. This is, really, we're at a point in this program where we need to have someone that has experience with this, this type of a operation. And we're working with a group out of California, Renewable Funding, that actually designed the first program in the country based on this model. And I really see this as, as a smart investment. I know money is tight and we need to be, be very careful what we spend, how much and where. But this is an investment that I believe will pay off many times over when the city actually does have a program in place for city residents.
Further discussion? Member Bain?
Oh, Mr. Gosny, just a quick question. Will there, maybe I should, let me withdraw that question and go right on to the mayor. Is it your understanding that we would, when you enter into this agreement, or the Service Safety Director's, and who's entered, she's going to enter into a contract that will just be that part which is moving the potential money, the stimulus money, from the central holding authority into our area so we can parcel it out? I mean, it's going to be, it's not going to be any more than that part of the, of the process.
My understanding of this part is actually to set up the revolving loan mechanism. It's the idea that we have all the pieces nailed down to apply for stimulus money. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I would request that before you enter into that contract, you might talk to Gordon Petty, as I said earlier today.
Cross the government's COB was the acronym?
Yes, and it was the Housing Revolving Loan Fund. There are some issues with respect to Ohio that I think need to be addressed.
Okay.
I mean, public records and so on.
I know Gordon, I can talk to him.
Yeah, I know, he was, yes, he'll be a good source.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments? Yes?
Just real quick, one other aspect of this is, they can assist us in making our application to the federal grant entity. So, that's also something that may be part of, part of what we're funding here with this.
Any other comments? Member Bain?
I think we probably need to note for the record that the money from this comes from the Athens Station Project, doesn't it?
Used to be called the Revolving Loan Fund.
Yes. And it's a zero-sum game, because we know that soon it may be not funded at the same level as it is right now. But we once ran a paint program, and I believe the mayor will be looking to do that next year, is that right?
We put aside $15,000 in the past couple of years for that. We had no applications this year, mostly because it wasn't pushed that hard. Usually, the main PR that comes out of, for the paint program is coming from the code offs. They see a need out in the neighborhood, they put it out, and it's about $15,000, we'll do about three, two to three houses, depending on how much work needs to be done. We follow low and moderate income guidelines. There is a process to make sure it's been done properly. We usually have a bid that's put to place for the painting contract.
I actually think it works really well, and it has been a good program for communities. And I think that this money wasn't spent this year, so it may be able to be used this way. It's not general fund money.
That by definition is actually more closer to a grant, if you recall, and I think that was put together by Dale Tankey, who also is the one that changed the name from Revolving Loan Fund to Athens Enhancement, by member correct?
It happened earlier.
Are there any other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 13509? Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Onto ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 13609 is an ordinance granting renewal of a revocable license to Deborah Daniels, owner 39 Hooper Street, for use of the city right of way for a fence. Member Paul?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a straightforward renewal, 10-year renewal of a revocable license for a fence that is presently in place at 39 Hooper Street. Straightforward, permit is all filled, application's filled, the money has been put in.
Are there other comments? Ordinance 13709 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23 zoning code after 23.04 permitted uses and B3 general business zones. Again, member Paul?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have seen this particular ordinance in draft form several times. We had a public hearing on it on October 19th, and basically what this is doing is changing the Code Title 23, the zoning code, and it's cleaning up some grammatical errors that was, happened to occur last time it was looked at in the planning commission, and making it so that it reads much better.
Ordinance 13809 is an ordinance authorizing the replacement of defective water meters. Member Bain?
Mr. President, the city engineer asked for additional minutes. We normally put a certain portion of money aside for replacing defective meters, and specifically in this case, 13809 will replace the meters at Ohio University or places where it's unmetered, and it's going to, we hope. These savings in both the amount of money available, I mean, an increase in the amount of money available, and savings for us in the future as we get all of our meters in a form that can be used electronically and maybe reprogram the person currently reading this into another task, won't you?
Other comments on ordinance 138? Ordinance 13909 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit a grant, grant application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to provide services for the Ohio Rural Intercity Bus Program and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance would authorize the mayor, as the title explains, would authorize him to enter into a grant, or submit a grant application to the Ohio Department of Transportation. Assist for rural intercity routes, and as described, two of the routes would be of interest to us from Athens to Columbus and Athens to Cincinnati. It's, the grant program is an 80/20, what they call a direct grant with 20% match, and as Councilmember Bain explained last week, this 20% of the match is provided by Lakefront, the bus system, and so it's revenue neutral to the city.
For expense neutral?
For expense neutral, yeah.
Yeah.
No, no.
Are there other comments on 139? Mayor Wile?
Again, this is, you'll notice the date is December 11th, so we will have to make sure it gets done by then. And again, this is to go chase those grants, which are essentially pass-through. We have one in place, the Athens-Columbus one is, is one we do already, and it helps. So, I hope we can get to it.
So, we should look for a suspension at the next regular session of council on ordinance 139?
Okay.
To be timely. Ordinance 14009 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit a grant application for American Recovery and Reinvestment, ARRA funding through the US DOE, and declaring an emergency. Member Gosny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is related to the ordinance that we passed under suspension a few moments ago. This is a US Department of Energy stimulus grant opportunity with a due date of December 14th. This is for energy efficiency and renewable energy projects. The total is 60, a little over $63 million to be divvied up in awards of $1 to $5 million. So, this is, we're hoping this can be used to fund the revolving loan fund for the city to help pay for solar energy and energy efficiency for city homeowners and hopefully commercial as well. But that's what we still, needs to be discussed.
And given the date that Member Gosny mentioned, I would anticipate that all council members would try to get their questions in and ask, because I would think at next regular session of council, you'll need to move for suspension.
That's right.
Other comments on 140? 14109, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit grant applications for American Recovery and Reinvestment, ARRA funding through the Ohio Department of Development for energy efficiency improvements and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Gosny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is more stimulus money, this is, these are funds that have been funneled to the state, and the Ohio Department of Development is taking these grant applications. This is $4 million that's been set aside for smaller communities such as Athens, total of 26 counties in the state, for projects related to energy efficiency, with the possibility of including renewable energy as part of it. And we had a meeting last week, the mayor, the city planner, Member Bain and myself, to discuss possible projects that the city could apply for these funds for. A few of the ideas that we came up with were projects at the water treatment plant, replacing windows, boilers, that sort of thing, and anything else that would improve the energy footprint of that building and reduce costs to the city. And similarly, at the wastewater treatment plant, has another possibility, and we discussed the armory as, as a third possibility, is that's one of the older buildings that the city has ownership of and could definitely benefit from improvements if we're to use it at some point in the future.
Other comments on 141? Quite a few. Member Paul?
What sort of matching does this have to you?
It does not require a match.
Okay.
Member Bain?
Yeah, I just said, I meant to say that in the previous one, that there's supposed to be no cost to us, I guess. But Section 2, I don't understand what this means. The mayor is further authorized to enter into an agreement, I mean, any agreement that may be necessary for obtaining this financial assistance. I mean, doesn't the mayor have the right to enter into professional services agreements anywhere? What do you expect would be not covered by that rubric?
I had the intent to include that was simply because the deadlines for, for this stimulus funding come so quickly, to make sure that if they come back a month later, we don't have to bring something back before council, where we would be under a very tight deadline in order to do that.
But he would be authorized, I mean, I just don't have that much to say.
That maybe so.
Mayor Wile?
I think that just at this discussion for Section 2, if you remember, was if we need to, the project we're looking at, the wastewater treatment plants, for instance, Virge Snidel has done an extensive study already on that, recommendations within that. The, the water treatment plant was a little bit more vague to make it close to a shovel-ready project. There was discussion of actually maybe enlisting some services from Perfection, who has already done a preliminary energy audit of the building. Theirs, of course, is very vague, but the idea is if we wanted to, realize we have that 4, House Bill 420 RFP out there already, but they've done some work looking at that, as well as Chevron has done some, looking at both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. So, I think the Section 2 was if we wanted to augment some more definitive cost savings for the water treatment plant, we go to them and say, for a small fee, can you give us a, a profile of what we would take on the first measures to take?
Because they've already done the preliminary work?
They've done some of it, yes.
They're just asking to buy it back, right?
Yes. Well, they get, they did it all for free with the idea that they'll be-
They would buy it back, we would buy it back over a long period of time.
Yeah. That's, that would be the big picture they want us to, they want, they're shopping for the big picture, but we could buy a piece of it, probably.
And we already authorized this in another ordinance, didn't we? That you could enter, that you could do this, so.
I think I can probably do that for small things anyway, I mean, whether it's-
Well, exactly, that's just my point exactly.
Oh, you mean for the 420? Yes, yes.
Yeah, that is already there, okay. Just wanted to know.
Member Bain, you know, you and I were on council the last time we replaced the windows in the water treatment plant.
I thought you were going to say, let me-
Were they stained glass at that time?
No, but I very well remember Sarah Hendrick, her bringing before you and I the cost of doing the engineering, and we ran it and raved quite a bit over it. The engineering cost was outrageous. So, it's a real shame that they didn't look at it in light of energy efficiency.
That was no problem, full state.
So, they're less than 20 years old, that much I do know.
Okay.
Okay, other comments on 141? Ordinance 14209 is an ordinance levying special assessments for sidewalk improvements associated with the Carpenter Street project and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, this is a long ordinance, but it's actually the third ordinance in a trio of ordinances dealing with the assessments for sidewalk improvements that went along with our Carpenter Street improvements. We had two property owners who filed a, a special, a request with the Assessment Equalization Board to, to look at the charges that they had accrued for the sidewalk project, and our Assessment Equalization Board approved one revised assessment and upheld the other one. And in order to get that action taken by the city to build these property owners in the proper manner, we need to pass this ordinance. I'm not going to suspend it at this time, but we will pass it. So, go ahead.
Other comments on ordinance 142? Onto announcements and other business. I think we've got a one committee of the whole meeting next week. We're slowly, an application for tracks on it, the agenda. Other committees? Member Paul?
I'll be finding some personnel, don't you think?
Good thing, definitely. American Department Committee? Any others? Okay. Any other announcements? Yes, Member Paul?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Ann Rubin to the Comprehensive Plan Review and Advisory Committee.
Sorry? Motion in a second. Sure to tell us how they end a little bit?
I've, I've mentioned her last week in committee meeting. I think it's for a three, it's for a three-year term. She has some expertise in housing, from what I understand. She lives on the, on Maplewood. And it's, personally, I think it's great to get new blood onto the committee. It's important, it's a very important committee, and we're now going into a new phase, and it'd be great to get new people.
Other comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Rubin. Any other announcements, Ms. King? Member King?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the soft hiring freeze not apply to the captain position at the Athens Fire Department, which was created by the resignation of Captain Munn.
Motion in a second. This was also discussed a little bit last week, for anyone that doesn't understand what we're talking about. Further comments? All in favor? Opposed? Pretty good. Any other announcements? Onto an opportunity for citizens to speak on any legislative items or city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda.
Mr. President, members of council, I'm Phil Goldsberry, 7884 Angel Ridge Road, just barely beyond Longview Heights. I have an open letter to address to the president and the members of council tonight. It is more for the members of council, I think, than the president, but since the president is in charge of procedures and protocols and so forth, kind of directing it through him to the council members. Tonight, I have a question which should be of more than passing interest, I think, to all council members and the public and the administration. Although it is more directed specifically to the president, as I said, and it is to the council itself, to preface the question, I might observe that November 21st of 2009 will be a year and seven months since I stood here and made a request to council to consider moving the Hevy statue from the water plant to the, to the Athens Recreation Center. Since that time, and I'm sure most of the council's aware of it, the Athens County Commissioners have voted in open meeting to allow it to be placed in the lobby of the Athens County Courthouse, if that would be a suitable alternative to the recreation center. Over the course of this year and seven months, no less than five levels of city government has been involved in one way or another in this, this request, or consideration of this request. First, it was the city council who directed it to the council Community Affairs Committee. Community Affairs Committee, I think, consulted the Recreation Board. The Community Affairs Committee, I think, also consulted the Athens Arts Commission. And the Athens Arts Commission has appointed an ad hoc technical advisory committee to, to further consider how it could be moved. Now, that has taken a year and seven months, or 19 months, to get through, or into five different levels of city government. My question to council is, by what set of procedures or protocols can such a seemingly elaborate system of deliberation and/or consideration persist or exist? Considering that for an entire year and seven months following council's placement of that issue into the Community Affairs Committee, there has been no updating report to council that I know of, nor has any council member requested anything about that subject that was introduced to it 19 months ago. Also, the five groups involved, excluding council, of course, since it's the primary group, has not had its leadership report to council in any manner whatsoever. And I don't know how a thing like that can go that long without being addressed in some fashion or other. I have three observations at the end of my letter, I will not share those, those are personal observations that the council can look at, at its discretion, but I did want to share what I perceive to be the facts of this particular case we're dealing with. dealing with, and to point out that that is a long, long, long waiting period for a citizen to, in fact, come forward and ask for something to be considered, and no consideration seems to be forthcoming at this point in time. And I would like to just pass out the letter. I have twelve copies of it. It'll go to the President, and he can distribute it as he sees fit. I will retain my original copy. It would be nice, I think, for everybody in town to start understanding how things work if they're to relate in any way, shape, or form to city government. And I think city government needs to start relating more to citizens and less to embedded kind of procedures, perhaps, that may or may not exist, that tends to lock things up, as this seems to have been locked up. And I thank you for your time and consideration. I'll give this to you, Mr. President, by my approach.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Goldsberry. I appreciate your comments and, and your patience and professionalism with which you make your comments.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, counsel.
Yes.
Thanks, Phil.
Is there any other citizens wishing to speak on legislative items or city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, Mayor Wild.
Don't forget to vote.
Tomorrow is Election Day. Don't forget to vote. Seeing none, we now stand adjourned.